I'm not entirely sure what all we're gonna touch on in this of the discussion items listed. Kind of depends on, uh, really most of the participants, I guess, the bulk of yours look all about. Thank you very much. Okay, never mind, we'll talk about it. So, to start off, Chief Hedges, our resources director is here to discuss a update from the Wellness Committee.
Yeah, it's a real small one. The policy currently, which one do I have? States that a maximum of 160 points can be earned each month for each wellness activity to a maximum of two per year. They want to change it to a maximum of 160 points can be earned each month, taking out, um...
Per day?
No, the per activity.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that.
No.
Thank you.
Oh, by the way, I think I forgot to mention that the meeting is recorded, both audio and visual. Very good, so what needs to happen? We need to pass down a meeting, or is that just a...
No, that's an internal.
It's just an internal.
Okay, so draw up, what's that on?
Yep.
Sounds good. 2018 meeting schedule. Uh, let's, so are we liking the, first of all, weekly work sessions? I generally still find that helpful. So, stay on with Mondays? What about the noon time meetings? As far as I know, Mr. Scully is the only person that's complaining about it being at noon. I know some of the employees may have loved it, but you guys are here, what do you think?
I'm moving.
I mean, either way, moving up to 10 in the week, complaints at 10.
Right. I kind of like the noon time meeting myself, wish more than you.
I'm fine with whatever you decide. Okay.
I like it, my other problem is I end up not eating, and I get angry.
You agree, yeah.
But other than that.
You do, but...
That's where your seats are, actually.
That belongs to them.
Yeah, I need to get them.
Part of your problem is your juice.
That's not the problem.
Yes.
I would just say that, and I've heard this from other people who are now retired and can't get to either this meeting or to the commissioners' meeting, that having it at noon is not convenient for people who are working. This is a different kind of meeting, but we're not gonna be able to move outside of work hours, so...
Well, yeah, well, we could, like hypothetically, we could put it in the evening, and then we would have to have a sheriff's deputy here at night, and then...
Yeah, it costs more.
They've had, they've had meetings in the evening and nobody showed up to those, so it's like, you know. I think our meetings generally have been fairly well attended.
Yeah.
Compared to, you know.
Compared to the past, yeah.
And part of the main reason we moved it to noon, as I recall, was because people were telling us they could come to meetings on the lunch break. So...
Because previously it was like at 10 o'clock, and they...
Really, but I think our meetings, I think, have been tended better than they were, so...
Well, maybe even better too, but that's part of it, too.
Yes, okay. So, work sessions remain every Monday at noon, correct?
Yep.
How about Wednesday meetings continue on with the second and fourth Wednesdays of every month?
I'm fine with that.
Fine.
Also noon?
Sure.
All right, then basically everything remains the same. Will there be any holidays we'll have to work, work through right now? Oh, and C cap, might as well prepare, count on that. So we'll skip Mondays around C cap. Um, and Wednesdays, plenty of a couple holidays.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, we've had a lot of luck with that, for sure, so...
All those ones that you have to skip from meetings, can you, are you just gonna skip a meeting for that week altogether, then?
Like the work session, that, for instance, next Monday's work session is during C cap. Regardless of whether there are one or two commissioners here, we're just gonna cancel that work session, correct?
But they'll all be here on Wednesday for the commissioners' meeting.
Correct, yes, yes. Oh, I thought you were looking at C cap schedules in next year's 2018.
Yeah, I will be, and then they just won't be listed.
Just won't be there, okay, I think that's, because you're already going up meetings from what you were a year ago by doing them every week. Those weeks that you're gone, to try to pile everything in one, two minutes back into the office for the last couple days, the week is tough.
Yeah. All right, and that's the only two we set, all right? Prison board is set by prison board, et cetera. Salary board, oh, but that's our...
Salary board is always the second and fourth Monday, by county code.
Okay. Have your time, same 11:30 is working. I can all think of one, maybe two times or a night over.
Yeah, usually it's pretty quick.
Okay, very good. All right, so Attorney Shreeb is the next person on the agenda, and he's outside the door talking right now. So, let's, let me jump to, all right, anything else on 2018 meeting schedule? All right, very good. Briefly, let me introduce the hotel rates concept, and then Attorney Shreeb, you have a comment on it. So basically, the idea is this, DHF, the human services, follows the statewide, I believe, sustenance and lodging policy that the state puts out. There's varying rates on what hotel reimbursement or charges can be approved, and that's set by the state. And so, she asked us to pass that in the next public meeting for human services. At the same time, I had thought maybe it would just make sense for the entire county to move on at the same rates as the state sets, since they've already done all the homework on what 3pm should be, so, I don't know if I'll see, no question of duty. So, if the commissioners are in agreement to just passing some language that Attorney Shreeb can write up, that would tie our reimbursement rate to the state's rate, we could do that at the next meeting. Attorney Shreeb, how complicated is that?
No, do what, we can get that put together quick. Paul, I was actually upstairs in a hearing, we broke for lunch late, but now just something we can do at the meeting easily.
Okay.
No problem.
Just make sure this employee business travel, okay? So this is gonna supersede what we have for our travel policy?
That's what I'm thinking, just make it blanket.
Do employees still have the right to come to the commissioners and ask for it to be waived?
I would assume so.
Like the current policy does, okay? So if you're at a conference and your conference is there, and that's, okay.
Yeah, I think so. Anything else you see? I mean, I didn't really compare it to our current rates. Is it, I know it's a little more, but is it pretty comparable? You have any other concerns?
No.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any concerns?
No.
While I was, we were sitting here talking before the meeting, we also thought that we would look and see how far off the sustenance rate is. Is that a rate, or subsistence, whatever? Subsistence rate. So the state also sets a subsistence rate, which I assume is meals. Really, John, maybe what we should do is just take a look at this Commonwealth travel and substance rate, and see what you wanna tie directly to that policy. I don't know what our current policy is, but this is pretty comprehensive in terms of, here's the amount of money you can get at the end of 24-hour period, you know, blah, 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 car rentals. Obviously, a lot of it's not relevant and could just be cut, but there are other portions of it I think would make sense.
Yeah, that one doesn't have no problem at all.
Oh, there's something in here about fines? Parking fines, moving vehicle violation, fines, not reimbursable. Yeah, stuff like that, I don't, I haven't looked at our policy, but I would suspect that you...
It essentially did merge it, I incorporate by referencing out this, we published your rate, so it keeps from the stop, running process of update, update, update.
Exactly.
That's...
Yeah, keeps us out of the business of updating, and it puts that policy in state.
So do you need a copy of our current travel policy?
I believe I have copied that in our policy.
I have, I've not seen this before, read through it, so I don't know, but one of the things that one sheriff's department of Congress were asking before, I'm not in favor of, they had asked about allowing people to skip meals during the day and told them up so they could have so much at the end of the day, to do the prime rib. I don't know if this allows you to pare down your meals or not, I wasn't in favor of doing that.
Yeah, it does not, the way the state's policy is, does not allow you to do that, I believe.
Okay, all right, good.
I just skimmed it, but I thought it said that you'd have to turn your receipts per meal, and meal is set, I mean, if it's dinner, it's such and such a dollar figure, if it's lunch, it's such and such. Yeah, I'm not in favor of that either. All right. So, it sounds like we have tested approval to go ahead and have you draft up language. Okay, good. Let's go back to RIC's meal policies slash internet usage policy, and for that, Attorney Shreeb, I printed out copies of the guest terms of use for wireless internet access for each of you. The, the deal is that we currently don't allow people outside of Warren County government to get on our internet. Of course, this poses problems for guest speakers, events like this, et cetera. In addition, I believe the personal device usage is not currently defined in our policy, is that a call? So therefore, this is, this and the right to know, we're overhauling it all together, as Attorney Shreeb put it, is what he's suggesting.
Well, I mean, first of all, I'm in a lot of other courthouses, and it's pretty standard to be able to jump on. As long as you go, you accept the terms of use, whatever they are, which is very similar to that, but together, you're on, you're buying, no problems. It's a binding contract, and you're essentially, the county's not looking at you coming back. As far as where the origin of this policy came from, I went on, pulled a lot of standard terms that need to be in these, a lot of the limited sphere of liability issues. As we are not the provider, we are just essentially the host of the internet. What things we could be looking at, try to put language in there to deal with that. Pulled a lot of, a lot of policies used, utilized by other counties, and utilizing LexisDex, to see generally what things should be in there. Obviously, this is a lot less than some big corporate internet usage policy would be, but it's on par, and actually a little bit more tough and a little bit beefier than what you're gonna find, say, after all of McKee County law policy that I looked at. I feel comfortable with it, I mean, I'll be very honest, a lot of it's straight legalese, but it essentially protects us from improper stupid things that someone on our internet, if they try to do, makes it, obviously establishes a contractual dynamic where we can essentially justify kicking someone off from our internet, blocking someone on our internet, and also intends to limit our warranties, and thus our liability, if someone were to go and do some, ever certain type of damage. But it's highly likely, most of this stuff will never be, will never be operative, will never be needed, but it's, it's essentially, think of it like insurance. You rarely use it, but you want the proper thing, the updated things, the proper terms in there, when you need them to protect yourself, so... That's what I did, for talking again, a little longer than our other county, county cards, I mean, I'm not pretty much seven degrees. A lot less than McDonald's 50, but a lot longer than the other county, and real focused protection in terms of third-party actions in there. So, I'm comfortable with our amended, I think it flows a lot with our right to know policy, just to protect the county. You were referred to the device use policy, that is something I feel should generally probably be more appropriate in the employee handbook. But the terms, as far as these terms go, will be binding on, no matter what device it is, on the internet. It just, it doesn't cross over into that employee, employee nexus, it's just that it covers everybody else, any devices. But that specific part should probably remain in the handbook, so...
I have a question.
Sure.
Has our IT department and Bill Gallagher reviewed this?
I am not aware if Bill has reviewed it, I'd like to talk to him today. I've been in hearings since 8:30 this morning, I got there. I'm probably gonna be done around, I'd estimate, I'd estimate two, so I kinda wanna stop in IT and run through him. I don't think any policy, given Bill's, his expertise, give a, I don't think anything touching technology, internet should be passed without his eyes having given it up.
Agreed. And that would go for this section and the right to know policy in general, the other policies?
The right to know policy doesn't give to techie, it sticks pretty much to law and case law, so that, I mean, I feel comfortable, anyone can look at it and put their thoughts into it, but right to know is purely drafted from a case law regulation, statutory. This does get into some specific high-tech issues, which, you know, there, I went through some of the federal code with that. It's pretty, it's pretty cumbersome stuff, so I would love them to second sit a vice, just from the technology, so you're the fans to jump in and look at it. I think that's great.
And my suggestion for the right to know policy would be just because of our archival system and the attempt to draw information from that source. So, the right to know policy would be important in that manner?
Yeah, I think it should be, should be co-located, everything should fit together with the puzzle. That's a lot, one of the big goals, we're gonna do and try to update all these policies, if we don't end up with contradictory documents, or everything that wants significantly dated, one contradicts the other, I want everything to flow nicely. That, that's the meaning of a successful organization effort.
So your recommendation is to go ahead and pass the guest terms of, of the internet usage policy?
Pending, pending, Bill's approval, yes.
Right, at the next meeting, then it's...
Absolutely.
And then the right to know policy is one we talked about last week, or maybe the week before. Is there anything changing in that that you recommended before we asked?
In terms of the drafted policy, I'm not advising anything in there. I've had feedback of various people, it's all been positive. I'm welcome to, if anyone has anything that they wanna tweak, that's fine. Any, any suggestions will incorporate it into the latest version that was reviewed at the work session that everybody has and everybody's seen. So if there's anything between now and the next meeting, please let me know, because, but as far as getting this matter handled with the rates policy, reimbursement, the internet policy, and any tweaks to right to know, there's absolutely no issue with getting that done in time for the next meeting. But I would love to know as soon as possible, so keep that the case.
Right, I don't have anything.
I just have one question, when you say guest terms, is this also for our employees?
This does not touch on employee.
And you said that would be handled in the policy?
I think that everything touching employees specifically should remain in the employee handbook. That's our kind of binding contractual relationship between county and employee. I mean, this covers every guest, every device, but I think specific terms should be lodged in the employee handbook. Did you send Mark an email about that? He said to shoot over anything, because it would be, I, again, kinda like with the, these terms with Bill, I would not recommend going and putting final passage, final ink on anything until our assigned labor council is taking a look at it. Otherwise, no purpose.
Well, I would agree, because if you open this up to guests to be able to utilize the internet, your employees then will have access to that. So it would seem prudent to do the employee handbook then, in coordination with this.
Yes.
Yeah, and everything coincided.
Yeah, I don't, I think that there are kind of two issues. One is, is this is just like the people that generally, like vendors that show up that wanna do a presentation and need to use the internet temporarily. And we have no guest Wi-Fi, so...
This would be in preparation for...
This would be in preparation for that. I think that to get, to open Wi-Fi up to the public, and therefore the employees as well, would be, and that's something that Bill's looked at previously, so even if we took this to him and talked to him about it, you know, that would prompt it.
So once, once this is passed, if somebody needs to access the internet, how do they know what our policy is?
I like the way that McKee County did it, and this is the most frequent way. If you're a new user, you go, you click, or you can even do every time you log on. I mean, obviously, employees can be, as a separate policy, could be taken out of that. But if you're someone who walks into a courthouse, and maybe you're on your phone, you're trying to connect to the internet, or tablet, a lot of times, I'm in the attorney's room at these places, trying to get some work done in my dead hours. Every time you go in, you find the network, you click, you, it's a variety of two things. You either get cleared from a password from the notary, or the notary, in some courthouses, it's public, you need to enter the password. But no matter what one it is, the terms come up, you have to do the, I have read, I agree, click confirm. Again, there's some variations in there between throwing in a password, it's purely public. There's variations between one time and being recognized, which is definitely more Bill's avenue to set that up, or having to reconfirm every time, every time you log on. But, I mean, that's generally the, how that's done.
So you haven't incorporated those rules in this?
Well, that's more technological, I reserve the right to do that. I say either way, we can do it either way, so...
I think we pass this as it is, and then it just gets copied over onto the, I mean, this is the agreement, whether it's in paper or digital.
Yeah, and obviously, anything passed, we should have online. I mean, everything that I'm doing that's presented to you in paper, it should be posted online transparently, or anything like that.
Okay, good. Anything else on the right to know slash internet usage? Very good. Redevelopment Task Force, Attorney Shreeb.
Wanted to have a more complete presentation on this today, but with budget and everything else, I've been incredibly busy. So, right now, we're obviously involved in the marketing task force, that consists of seven people, including myself. We've had three public meetings, we'll have our final three this month, December, January, to then produce a report for the county, for the commissioners' office, in order to offer recommendations on how to promote and develop the county. That group, in my opinion, has fared very well. The information that we pulled out of the group has been very informative, very creative. There are a lot of solutions that they've developed that I think are gonna be very helpful across the board to the commissioners' office and to other organizations inside and outside the courthouse. So, so since that's gone as well as it has, in my opinion, I wanted to address some other issues that keep popping up in various areas with different groups that we're involved with that address property in a variety of different ways. So, and basically, this group will address three or four tasks that I want to lay out for everybody. I'm still in the process of revising the resolution, and I wanted to have a white paper for you, but I'm not finished with it yet. So, the main issue that's gonna be addressed by this redevelopment task force is BLIT. That's gonna be the top one, and, and it was kind of the impetus for generating the resolution and for kind of having a property task force to begin with. And I just, as I've worked on this, it's just expanded. So, our BLIT process was created in 2009, 2008, and basically, in 2008, the county created a BLIT property ordinance, a BLIT property review committee, and the redevelopment authority, which constitutes the current process for BLIT in the county. Since that time, there's been no major review or renovation to that ordinance or the process itself. As a result, numerous people from all three committees, or from the BLIT property committee, the review committee, the planning commission, and the redevelopment authority, have all, I've had conversations with all of them. I've also had conversations with realtors and the people that are part of the EOC and others about the BLIT process overall, both inside the city, outside the city. And all of them have independently voiced concerns about, you know, how that process is around. Not that the process is bad, but that we don't do as much as we could do with the BLIT process, or that there are a lot of things that are kind of left on the table, or a lot of opportunities that are lost. So, everybody kind of independently brought up issues with it, and so, as a result, I felt like it would be an important thing to put a group together in order to discuss that topic in a high level of detail, and to, again, produce recommendations to the commissioners' office and to the county to figure out ways to improve that process, make it more dynamic, and make it more useful to the people of Warren County. So, I started with the BLIT process, and there are a lot of legal elements related to that that I think need to be analyzed as a part of this, and I think that there are, there are a lot of things that we can do differently. So I don't think that it'll be too hard to pull that information together. The people that I've already discussed about being on this committee have, have offered numerous recommendations in and of themselves periodically. This'll be a way to collect those recommendations. Second item that the redevelopment task force will be dealing with is tax claim. Currently, the county's tax claim process is, you know, is completely legal and justified. Again, this is another issue where there are a lot of recommendations, a lot of things that can be done with tax claim that are currently not being done in order to better manage property within the county for a variety of reasons, whether it's for redevelopment, whether it's for BLIT, whether it's, you know, either one of those two. Third is housing, is a general, to discuss housing in the county. This includes transitional housing and also treatment, treatment housing options within the county, analyze those. We have, I, you know, there, through the EOC and the various housing committees and a number of other, and human services and a number of other organizations, there's been a continuous discussion about the challenges in housing within the county. The goal, I think the goal here would be to get a list, to get, to really analyze the housing situation within the county, and again, review it, make recommendations to the commissioners and to the county in general as to how to more efficiently utilize housing, and take the, the areas that we have now that are, that are redevelopment ready, and put them in a position to be redeveloped or, you know, figure out ways to use them in other ways that'll be more productive. So, and then there are just a few quick notes that I wanna make related to these three issues. The first is that, it's apparent to me, it might not be apparent to others, I've had other people mention that these issues. Warren County has had traditionally, what is my opinion, a hands-off view of, of property in the sense that it feels like there are lots of different situations where we have properties that are available within the county, or situations where a property is in transition, and we've generally taken a hands-off approach to it, or haven't had a process to really address it, and it'll get taken by a developer or a third, a party that, you know, maybe doesn't wanna have anything to do with the property, and then it becomes dilapidated, or it, you know, continues through the tax claim process. The goal here is to come up with recommendations to help the county potentially be more proactive in its approach to dealing with property. When it comes to the BLIT issues within the county, this is another situation where generally, the county, in my opinion, has taken a hands-off approach, you know, and so you have properties that are perpetually in either a state of BLIT or constantly are going through the tax claim process. And we've gotta figure out a way to take whatever portion of those properties and make them usable. And, and then the other bottom line issue is, is that everybody is aware that we have a population decline within the county, and also a decline in employment and income. And so, as a result, that's naturally gonna create a distressed market where there's gonna be challenges to property maintenance, you know, especially with an aging population. And so, the goal here is to, for the first time in a few years, or at least since the BLIT property, BLIT review committee, and redevelopment authority were developed, to have a deep dive into the general view of property within the county, how it's managed through the various tools that the government in the county has at its disposal. So, just a couple of things about the committee. This, this group is naturally gonna have to be a bit bigger than the marketing task force. The marketing task force is only seven people. I'm expecting this group to be probably 11 members, maybe more. I'm expecting this group to be probably 11 members, maybe more. And a lot of that has to do with the number of organizations that just have to naturally be included in it. So far, I have eight members that have agreed to be on the committee. I have three that are... Well, I have a couple that I'm in the process of asking, but I haven't gotten a confirmation on. I don't think that it'll be too hard to get 11. So, some of the groups that are going to be involved in this, the WCCBI, the BLIGHT Committee, there are members from the BLIGHT Committee that are going to be on it, the RDA. There are city personnel, and two different solicitors are going to be on the group. Members from planning and zoning. And then, there are also municipal officials that have agreed to be on the group. I'll have a final list.
Have you actually already contacted all those people?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so, like I said, and all of them have agreed and have been very interested and excited at the prospect of taking a look at this. A lot of that has to do with, like I said, the process that we have currently kind of silos the responsibilities between a lot of different groups. And so, to some degree, it's very difficult for them to coordinate or to have a coordinated effort to reform the process. So, yeah, so there are two or three that I still have to communicate with and get a final okay that they're willing to work on the group. My goal is to have this group start up in January, maybe February, but it'll probably be January, February, March, and April. I'm setting a four-month window for it because I think, I don't think that this will take six months to do. Mostly because a lot of the stuff that is related to this is legal in nature, so you either can do it or you can't do it. And most of the recommendations that I think the group will produce are things that are already... People have already made recommendations on it. It's just a matter of codifying it in a document that we can share with the community amongst ourselves in order to review the information. So, it'll be four months, it should be done in April. This group may end up the same way as the marketing task force in the sense that the group may decide to try to push it to be six months. If that's the case, then I'll revise the resolution before we were to pass it. But I think that four months is more than enough. Everybody that I've talked to feels like four months is enough. There are people that I think are going to... That are already working on information for this group as a part of the development. The other thing, the other reason I think that this will be fairly quick is that it's... Although there are some creative elements in it, it's not as abstract as, you know, the whole notion of marketing. So, I think that... I don't know that there's as much of a need to be, to have a bunch of creative thinkers. So, that's it. So, January to April. I will have a resolution to you within the next day. I think I'm mostly done with it. I just didn't want to present a resolution to the board. And then, my hope is to have, if everybody's comfortable with it, to have it put on the agenda for the next public meeting and then vote it on.
Okay. Any questions? Any public questions? Very good, thanks. So, let's, speaking of that, jump to the agenda for next Wednesday. As a reminder, Monday's work session is canceled due to the fact that at least two of us will be at CCAT. So, currently, I have redevelopment task force, hotel, landlord, subsidy, whatever, meal reimbursement, I don't think. Right-to-know policy, internet usage policy. When do we pass the 2018 meeting agenda? Do that now or at the last meeting?
It's not really passed. It gets advertised in December.
Okay. We won't be doing the laws committee thing. Is there anything else that's going to be coming before the board for that one, the upcoming listening?
I believe there is a public hearing on CDBG funding.
Okay. Oh, and 911 contracts. Thank you, Trish. The way back in, I want to say, February or March, we had an agreement with the landowner that one of our 911 towers is on. There's still another 911 tower that straddles two properties. And I've brought it up several times. We finally had the agreement before us. I have not approached the property owners to see if they're ready to sign them with the language, but I have spoken with them in the past about leasing their property to us. Currently, we have 911 towers on their parcels with a handshake, but no written contract that we can find. So, I'd like to remedy that at the next public meeting. And we have talked about that, I've not seen it before. I feel like we need to... I assume you're still all agree. Very good. Anything else that's going to be brought up for Wednesday's meeting? The solid base plan will not be ready, right?
No.
I think that's it. Unless something else comes up. How do we want to do that? Normally, I'd say we don't add anything to the agenda after work session before. But, in this situation, it's a week out.
It's a couple of Wednesdays.
It's not just Wednesday, it's probably Wednesday.
I know. I said, I thought it was usually we didn't have anything until, except for Wednesday.
Forty-eight hours before. So, if the meeting's on Wednesday, we want to make sure that everyone on the board is aware that there's going to be a vote on something.
By Monday.
By Monday.
Okay.
After work session. In this situation, this is for the last work session. So, would you all be comfortable, if something pops up, we can just agree to it via email by the same time, this Monday? Because I don't want to lock us in the saying, we can't add anything more than agenda. I wonder if we've still got nine days.
Yeah, and I know that there's a public hearing, and it'll be real quick, and then the CDBG resolution.
Okay. All rude stuff. Yes, sure.
I have a request that could affect the agenda. You all agree?
Yeah, for a presentation from the DEP.
Yes.
But I think that'd be more appropriate than in a work session.
Okay.
Because there's not public action that would be taken. I mean, there's not action by this board.
Okay.
And the next work session would be the December 4th. No?
No. Twenty-eighth, twenty-seventh.
So, the 27th, Christian Morrison and I will not be in town. That's the weekend after.
Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, yeah. Do you want to try to reschedule that meeting to the 28th Tuesday?
It's on to the 28th, salary board, or prison board.
Prison board, yeah. Or do we just want to skip two weeks and go right to December 4th?
I don't know.
I don't know of anything that's pressing the next December 4th or if the status is true of this request.
So, you want that on for December 4th work session?
Well, when is the... Mr. Taylor, why don't you go ahead and describe your request?
I sent an email to all of the churches this morning. I just happened to have some copies that...
Thank you.
So, I can make it easier for you to look at. There's a request by the Warren Generation Station, which is in Starbrake, kind of a kind of ship, to modify, it's called a minor modification of their operating permit. A lot of people don't even know that a generation has been operating. It basically is a peak demand type station, so all the air conditioners are running, overflowing. It's hurt, and then it's in and operates. The problem with that station is that it does not comply with Clean Air Act standards. The only way that it's allowed to operate is through this averaging system. So, they take, in the current request, they take 10 generation stations that are located elsewhere in Pennsylvania that this same company owns, and they average the pollution together so that if it's a high or low, it doesn't really affect the average. So, in other words, this station could be allowed to operate even though it is a polluting operating station. It's polluting outside of the current air quality standards. That, by the way, is... That averaging, system averaging is kind of... It's something that DEP allows, but it's, I think, saying calling it legally devious is probably accurate. I don't know that it's going to have to be in court. But for the people in Warren County, I think the health and public health and safety issue has to do with whether or not we want to bear the brunt of the health effects. It's clearly one of the situations where the bad effects stay in Warren County. And I'm not sure if there are really any effects that the county gets from that. Because I understand there are only two employees of that operating station and other duties, including when that station operates. The other thing I'm not sure about is whether or not they're going to expand operation. Last year, they operated for 56 hours. But we don't know how many hours they're going to operate. So, that could increase. We don't know what other stations are going to be closing. These are all pretty much privately owned or owned in the public sector. So, unless someone has a really good picture of which ones are opening or which ones are coming out live, which ones are closing, we both can't predict how many hours that one is operating. And then, we want to go over whether it's going to be allowing narrow factors or determinants.
So, Phil understands at least one big thing. There's is that you're saying it could be averaged amongst many different facilities. Hours is not going to go to the limit because it's so seldom used. You're saying that the pollution is really happening elsewhere, so what's our concern?
No, what I'm saying is that, let's say, per hour basis, for Warren Generation Station, it does not meet on an hourly basis the law of the level of contaminants.
Great.
However, if you include it with nine or 10 other generation stations that are below...
And that's because we are in oil... So, the coal, the original facility is not used at all anymore.
Correct.
The permit is actually for that, from my understanding.
That maybe it is.
And the reason that the DEP has allowed that to keep up or I suppose why the company has continued to apply for the same permit is probably because of that averaging effect.
Right.
Because they have no intentions, they don't even have anything there that's capable of firing at the old generating equipment.
That's correct.
So, currently, only the oil base.
It's oil, there's an oil turbine and there's a gas operated turbine, both of which you have to comply with the Clean Air Act standards.
Even though they're empty.
I can't sort of... I don't know. I don't know how weird they are.
But they have this compared to the original.
They actually compare those and cannot... They used to be do power station, now station by station. So, the other thing that makes this complex is that the state, of course, townsfolk, township is in a tamer area for sulfur dioxide pollution. And that state implementation plan was just currently or was previously approved by the LDEPA for federal approval. As I understand it, that requires new sources. And again, we might get into a legal question of whether or not this is a new source or whether or not this requires an additional amendment to the SIP that's already had EPA. But it might, in fact, I think that's what I was told in the Alphabets or the press in the... So, there's that complexity. It just seems like it would make sense to ensure that whatever happens at that operating station is in compliance of the SIP that just negotiated.
Right. Well, as we've said separately a couple times in the past, this board has no control over air, water, or other quality. That said, there is, you know, there could be compelling reason for us to be informed about what the DEP is doing. So, I'm not opposed to gentlemen giving a presentation. Of course, with the expectation that this board can't do anything about it.
Well, with this board, we should be at any concern, in this concern, as well as public safety. And we do not elect the folks who work the DEP. And I think the county has a self-interest in understanding what DEP is doing. This is affecting the citizens of the county. And I think you have a lot to say about what DEP does here. For example, the public processes that DEP has for this certain... I don't know how many of you saw the public notice in the newspaper.
When is the comment period closing?
That's a good question, too, because per day, it's probably a next week. Because it depends on when they actually submit a permit to DEP. It's not based on when the notice is published.
Right. It's probably 30 days from that, was that 30th, Thursday?
October, September. It's 21 days from that date.
That's what I heard. But they didn't actually turn that page, so I think it's a negative. The point is that if DEP is not requiring or if they're only requiring a very minimum or legal minimum for public processes, especially with these kinds of questions that are extremely complex, scientific, then I think it's incumbent on DEP to explain to the citizens who are mostly affected by it what actually they're doing, why they're doing it, and what to help experts do. So, I think that in that regard, I think our township supervisors and the county commissioners can ask DEP to do better than they did in the past.
Have you asked our legislators in the area if they've been involved with the question? They're on, sir.
I have not on this issue yet, but I think so. I didn't receive any power from the DEP from previous communication with the government, the sulfur dioxide SIP. So, except some verbal comments that suggested that one person I talked to was just not interested. So, you're my local elected official. And I'm hoping that at this level of government, even though it's not technically your jurisdiction, there are lots of things the county government can do to improve the process.
Well, I can tell you that I, when they went for the permit two years ago, I went down and had the DEP on this property. And I think that that was a rude rating of the fact that the DEP is very much under the governor's office, and they did not care at all when I wanted to know. So, I don't think that we really can be very helpful, but if it seems agreeable to the board, I'm not opposed to having Mr. Gupta, was it? Come be invited to our next meeting to present on it. And I think consequently, I think you're asking that the comment period be extended beyond our work session. So, we've already established that the next work session would be December 4th. That means it would be extending at minimum a couple of weeks. The comment period, most likely, is not going to be an issue, I hope.
I would hope not, but that would be an interesting test of whether or not they're interested in actually trying to inform the public with a real sincere effort at public information or whether or not they're simply doing the minimal legal compliance.
I'd be one of the, in your presentation, be interested in hearing what they have to say.
All right. Christian Morrison, you have it?
I'm very interested in hearing what they have to say.
All right, so, with the chief clerk contacting Mr. Gupta and request his presence at the December 4th meeting and consequently... December fourth meeting and consequently asked that the comment period be extended beyond that date. Any questions from Mr. Ebbel?
Houston Scott Hutchison?
No, Mr. Gupta, it's him from the DEP, although Senator Hutchinson, I would kind of, would probably cause DEP to be more interested in coming. Anything else from the board or public comment? Okay, very good. So, we were actually on the commissioner's agenda. Anything else that needs to be brought to the agenda meeting on Wednesday for subsequent work sessions? All right, hearing none. Is there anything schedule wise we wanted to raise? Of course, we were going to C cap. I'm leaving on Saturday. We've gone Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, we'll be back on Wednesday for the commissioner's meeting and then I'm, I'm leaving almost immediately after that meeting for Thanksgiving. Great.
This Friday, I'll be out for the comprehensive mayor health task force in Harrisburg.
Okay.
Next week, I'll be in all week.
Okay. Yeah, next week, for the, I'm sorry, the following week, we'll meet about this heavily on a budget. Christmas parade and the other Christmas things are the only other kind of public events that I have on my calendar in the next couple of weeks. Okay.
Are there any, we have signed up for the work session that's down to day ten on the fifteenth that aren't going, that aren't able to cancel reservations?
I'm still going.
You're still going? Okay, and you're going PM?
No. I canceled.
You canceled?
I canceled.
Jeff, are you still going?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Were you able to cancel reservations?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I was just going to ask if there was an unused reservation, I was going to suggest taking Angela, but they've all canceled.
I would bother with you taking Angela, it seems to make sense.
He can get her in.
Yeah, I mean, are the reservations, are they, is it stingy with them that they wouldn't?
Probably not. I would very much favor anyone in the fiscal department, government.
Okay. How about treasurer's office?
Yeah, I think the treasurer's out this week.
Wednesday.
He'll be back tomorrow.
He'll also be down tomorrow.
As far as I know, he'll be back tomorrow.
It's Wednesday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, so it'll be you, me, probably Angela, maybe someone from the bureau. Okay. Good. Anything else schedule wise? Department or committee updates? Any public comment? Very good. Anything else to bring?
I'm going to bring up the new old business that, they're requesting that you move the smoking area, that the smoke is rolling in the windows.
Oh, yeah, what are we going to do about that?
Well, we've talked about...
It's just because I'm a new guy and they thought, well, let's see, but...
We're, the, the original plan was when the parking lot was going to be done to generate a pad out next to where the shed is essentially and then make up the only smoking spot in the county. I think that in the short term, just to alleviate, you know, the situation, because everybody that we've talked to was supportive of removing smoking or moving it away from the main building. There are even people that advocated for completely eliminating our county property. So, I think the compromise that we came up with, at least in the short term, was the idea of maybe painting a space of the parking lot on that corner anyway and then just moving the receptacles there and then keeping them there, because then they'll be far enough away that no one will move them back to the building and then basically notify all the personnel and then also have the signage done to say that there's no smoking like next to the building and that that space over there is the only space for smoking. All, all that would have to do, happen in the short term is to basically talk to the maintenance manager and have the receptacles moved and then at the same time have like a space painted to show that that's where you can stand in order to smoke and then move it away from the building.
Okay. If you're giving me the green light to do it, I have to do it.
I don't. Does anybody else have a problem with that?
At some point, I would like to give them some cover.
Well, then, I, that's the one thing I looked at when I went out there, that there's no cover there either, because I thought maybe that's why they were...
Just as, just as someone that, that was, that is a former smoker, I'm not that worried about cover.
Oh, no, I was out in the middle of the night and, no.
Yeah. They don't, they don't have cover now.
There's no cover down there.
Well, that's what I, that's why I thought maybe it was there, I thought maybe there was an overhang, but there's really not.
And frankly, like at the, at this stage, it's, it's more convenient for the people who don't smoke in the building, especially during the summer when the windows are open, you know, like, you know, I, I think that smokers should be afforded some opportunity to, you know, smoke when they need to, but at the same time, like, it shouldn't, you know, be a, you know...
Bring in a non-smoker.
Yeah, well, I mean, there are several people and, and actually this side is where, so, I mean, I know that we've had a complaint from downstairs, but this whole side over here, especially like Ed's office, I mean, he can't have his windows open in the summer because everybody stands right out there and all the smoke goes in the window and it's really, you know, so it's not good. Everybody can go over there, it'll be, I think that'll be fine. There'll be, there'll be some complaints, I'm sure, from people in the basement who kind of smoke, you know, right here, but, you know, it's the times.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
So, Keith, do you mind working with Matt?
Not at all.
And to, to work out whatever you guys think is appropriate for that?
Absolutely.
And then you can handle notifying, once you're done setting it up or figuring out how it should be set up, notifying that, that everybody, you know, the change.
Very good. Anything else?
The only, the, the one thing I wanted to just quickly mention is, is that the engineer came in, he worked with a contractor on the boiler, it, it shouldn't, it shouldn't, they rearranged a few things, it should, they should be able to finish the job in the same timeframe, so it shouldn't...
So, it'll still be done here in the next few days, really?
Yeah. Yeah. So, we should be good to go, as far as our goes.
Anything else we could have to do? Oh, and Commissioner Gupta, nothing else now?
No.
All right, then we're adjourned.